For November thirteenth, first thing on the agenda is updates on commissioner boards. I can give you mine first, you want me to start, you want to start?
Go ahead, I don't have hardly but one.
Um, Doug, I'm going to remove off our schedule the Y cap because right now we're not sitting on that board.
Okay.
Some of the things going on there, so I'm going to remove that off our schedule. The Stibonet Gold Collaborative, right now, we, I've done everything that I can do on our end. We actually did, um, put in a letter, a couple of more requests as far as roads and recreation. Larry actually met with their recreation person, so we'll see what that looks like as far as an expansion of a trail system up there, so now that's totally off our plate until the draft E I S comes out, I believe, so, or the E I S, I think is probably ready. Let's see, my next one, the Economic Development Council, so the, our entire focus for the last three months has been on the summit. I was really, really pleased with the results. First time that we've had one hundred and seventy-five in the room, we had to expand that by twenty-five seats. Um, and that's our largest fundraiser, and with the support, uh, from us and two other businesses, and then all of the sponsor supports and everything else, I'd be really surprised if we don't net close to twenty thousand, which allows us to do the important work on the other end.
Is that from, is that from all the sponsors in there? Yeah, I was looking at that and going, maybe I should have put money on there and become a sponsor.
Next year, you're on.
I didn't, I didn't think about it, but I saw that up there, like, yeah, Neil, you, you should be on there.
I've always sponsored when I had a business before, and it's, yeah, it's a great way to support the community and vibrant conversations. You guys were there, you were there, and I really enjoyed the day, I think it was a great conversation to be had, so.
I thought she did a real good job, uh, Melissa, taking care of the I T part, she did a good job with that.
Yeah, she did, that's hard work, that's hard work. One of the things that, we just learned this last week, was not exciting, was we lost out on that broadband grant, and that was part of the Economic Development Council, that was one of our, we call them C A P teams, Community Action Teams, and broadband remains on that list, but, um, we, uh, they supported Zipley and we're going to have a conversation with them Wednesday night up here, if you're available at all. Uh, but I am going to talk to the broadband committee that's coming to do that meeting, and just let them know how disappointed we are in the fact that they did not support Open Access Network and give the money to a corporation, so, kind of sponsoring corporations instead of creating market-driven forces, I'm really upset about that.
You talked about that, I'm just disappointed in that. Well, no, because that doesn't give any of the people that they're going by any recourse, hey, we can get ever in my house. You know, those people that are, that are coming by, it's like, yeah.
And there, there's just no requirements on them, so I'm going to be speaking further with that broadband board, and, uh, finding what kind of parameters are out there as far as enforcement mechanisms. If they don't do what they're supposed to be doing, you know, how do you enforce it? So, working on that. Um, let's see. I have been on the N A C O calls, um, as far as the S R S committee and, and Pilt. So the S R S committee just went back the end of October and met in Washington, D.C., I didn't go because I'd just been there, um, with the legislators, and they were able to get an additional number of sponsors on some current legislation, make Pilt a stable funding source, actually create a permanent funding source for Pilt, and the same thing with S R S, so they had a very successful meeting.
Pilt is what we get so many cents per acre.
Correct.
S R S is just kind of replacing the forestry receipts that we used to get, I guess forestry had money, I don't know what all, but that was Craig Wyden when they first got that going, and so that's pretty much what that's still happening, is that correct?
That is, they were first funded, I think it was two thousand and three. And, uh, yeah, it's been ongoing since then, they're trying to find a stable funding source because really, we're not participating any longer with the Good Neighbor Authority, the stewardship plans. So the Forest Service is taking all of the forest receipts and putting it back on the forest floor, which is, some of that's a benefit to us, but we don't control any of it, so we can't tell them what to do with those funds.
And we don't see any of it.
We don't see any of it on our end, no. So we are trying to encourage through the S R S that, um, it's Title one, two, and three, and Title three is a portion of that, or no, let's see, Title two, which one's RAC? Title two.
Title two.
Yeah, so Title two is federal funding, but it goes to the RAC, and we're trying to, uh, request that the Forest Service funnel part of that down, so our local RAC committee actually controls more of those funds. So that was a great conversation, they had, they felt very positive about going back there.
They don't, but they don't know how they're going to stabilize that funding.
They don't, so what they've got right now is Wyden, um, and they've got sponsors on the Senate side too, to put ten mil, or, uh, ten billion dollars into a lockbox and live off the interest. That's what they would like to do with S R S funding, and that would fund it at today's level. And so that's, that's what they're working on, whether that happens with the split, you know, going on back there in Congress as far as budgets, I don't know. They would have to attach it to the, um, uh, Department of Interior to make that happen. We'll see if that happens, but anyway, they had a really good meeting back there, I feel.
Yeah, hopefully.
Comfortable, we've got one more payment coming, uh, we should, we'll have a payment coming, we usually get it in, uh, May or June. So we've got one more coming for next year, and then we're, nothing else has been funded yet.
So we got one S R S coming.
Got one more coming.
What about Pilt?
Uh, Pilt, we still get every year, and that's always comes, um, I think they put it in the farm bill every year.
Oh.
It's a lot more stable than S R S.
Right, and I, I get that, but I, you know, we look at Blaine County, we look at us, we look at how much Blaine gets compared to how much we get per cents per acre. Whoa, is that different?
It's the funding, um, it's the way that they actually do the funding formula.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, it's based on heads, you know, living in your county, and there's lots of conversations going on around that. They actually took, the legislature this year took two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put into a committee to study, um, S R S and Pilt, and Pilt most particularly. You know, how, how are we being funded for those taxes that are not being paid by the federal government? Utah has actually got a huge study that they're working on, they've actually bought software to assess the ground so that they can have a vibrant conversation with the Forest Service, and it sounds like Idaho may be going down that path.
Well, they need to, I mean, we're just, I mean, you look at how much ground we have, I mean, eighty-five, what was I reading the other day in here? Eighty-five, almost eighty-six percent is federal ground?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, yeah, so that is, I mean, that's.
We're a very poor county.
We're a very poor county. And we only have twelve, twelve thousand people.
Yeah.
And it's like.
Government paying for their stuff.
So like, yeah, our whole county, we don't get to tax any of that ground. That's, it doesn't help us.
Does not.
I mean, if we could tax that ground.
Oh, we'd have so much.
Take care of all our roads.
Well, and that's when people are complaining about how much we spend on education in the state of Idaho. I always tell them, we're sixty-seven percent federally owned, we don't have the resources that other states have to do anything with it because we're such a heavy, heavy federal, federally owned ground.
And you come to our county, we're almost ninety percent owned. Yeah.
Plus we have two percent water.
So we live on three percent of the ground.
We, exactly, that's exactly it, yeah. Let's see, what else do I have? Intergovernmental, I missed the last A I C, I A C meeting that's on the legislative committee. Uh, they did, uh, push forward five initiatives that's going to be their top priorities this year. Let me grab that for you really quick so I can share with you what they are. The priorities is going to be the hospital property tax exemption, area of impact agreements, essential emergency medical services, an increase in the nine eleven fee, and then large-scale solar and wind energy facility sightings. So those are going to be the ones that I A C will focus on, particularly in the legislature.
Push to the legislature.
And then the other ones, they, they're in a policy status, so that means that they're not, they're not the main focus of the staff, but we will support if anyone moves these forward, and that's the law clerk, state funding, inflation-based annual property tax budget, public works contractor license threshold increase, the local government travel and convention tax, uh, lengthy jury trials, the cost of those, and then mandatory sentencing for trafficking fentanyl. Some of the other, um, associations are going to take these forward, like the sheriff's going to do the trafficking fentanyl, I want, I believe.
Absolutely. So the, uh, that one up here, you're talking about the, uh, impact areas, I mean, that's already in the legislature there, I mean, they're still talking about it.
So they have to reintroduce a bill every year.
Every year.
Yes, if it gets tabled, they'll just take it back out of the drawer, you got to do it again.
Start all over.
So they've had, Todd Lakey has been working with Senator Moyle, because he's the one that had the sticky wick of last year, and they've been working all summer on trying to overcome his concerns, and so I A C feels like it'll move forward this year.
What do you think the outcome would be on that?
Uh, there's a whole process, so it will, it will.
You remember what it was all about last year, because I wasn't privy to really what they were doing.
So they're working on, if a city has an impact area, they, first of all, the first year goes from a two-mile to one-mile, so you've got two years to get it down to a one-mile impact area, and then you have to put together a plan and present to the counties, um, how you are going to move services into that area within five years. And if not, you lose that impact area.
Totally lose it.
Yeah, you can, I mean, it's probably a negotiation still, but the recommendation, the law will read if you're not, if you don't have a plan and you don't move into it, and then as you, as you bring, uh, ground into the city limits, that impact area is automatically, it extends one mile. So once you absorb some of it, it goes back out another mile.
And that, and that would be based on bill or provide services now to that original impact area.
Yes.
Once you get services there, then we allow you to have another mile.
But it's going to be interesting up here because the cities don't control the sewer. I mean, McCall doesn't, and neither does Donely.
Well, you know, well, I agree, but McCall really does, in a way, not legally, but they owned it, and then they sold it back to, uh, sewer district.
They didn't sell it to them.
Well.
There was a, uh, there was a transfer that was passed by the voters, saying who they wanted to take it and control it.
Well, still, it's the city's responsibility, in my mind, that you've got to work hand in hand with these people. You can't just say, okay, no, they're okay, really? No, they're, they're running the sewer for your city. You better be hand in hand with these people.
I don't know how that works, to be honest with you, I mean, we have got two of them up here, districts, and actually a third district, um, with South Lake that they need to be worked on, and I don't, I don't know how it works in other cities, I think that's one of the conversations that's going to have to be held.
That's, that's a weird.
Because Donely doesn't own theirs either.
No, that's North Lake, yeah.
Really interesting.
About the only thing I've got is, um, with Waterways, that's pretty much hit the end of the year. The guys are kind of working on, you know, setting up, after looking at all their paperwork and all their statistics, seeing where they're going to go this, next year, and have a better plan with Parks and Rec and all those guys with the city, and it's Kurt and him and the guys out at the Cascade Lake, and, uh, they're a good bunch of guys to work with, I like, I like working with them.
One thing came up that is probably going to be a conversation this next year is we are hiring temporary deputies, they have to pass a gun test. And then we allow them to carry, but they don't know the laws, when they can actually use it. So there's some concern coming around that, you know, how do we, how do we change that dynamic? I think there's going to be a lot of conversation going on.
Kevin was concerned with that out on Waterways. He was concerned with these newbies not having post-certification, they're just, yeah. And is valid, very valid concern.
So there's going to be some conversation on how we either get them some training, or how do we, how do we help them be an enforcement mechanism without carrying?
Andy Griffiths. Uh, the other one is, uh, Fairboard, they're all excited about what's coming forward. Still don't know what to do about the toilet situation, uh, but that idea that they presented, it sounds pretty good. I'd be interested to see his drawing of what Toby come up with. Especially putting more bleachers on that one end, how are you going to do that and make it all come together? Now, it's exciting to see that, that come together there, road department moving out a couple of years possibly, and I don't know how fast this gold, this thing's going to grow. There's still a lot of buildings to move, and that's going to take a couple of years. I don't know how they go about moving those buildings.
Just going to make sure we can fund all of it.
Yeah, just building, that won't be able to be moved, you know, that slab ungrade building, it's there. It'll become whatever we want it to become, so, I don't know, it's going to be interesting to see how all that comes together. Listened to Larry this morning about those, want to close granite, but I've got to get more involved with that, with Larry.
Recreation.
I got to get better with that, because that's.
Recreation Advisory Council, well, and you're on the Payette Forest Coalition and the Boise Forest Coalition. Have you been able to participate with those at all?
That's part of why I need to, he, uh, Larry said, you know, the Boise, there's some frustrating work with. They're good people to work with, but then they're the ones who want to close down that mountain.
Well, because they've been requested, so unless anybody steps up and screams.
Yeah, and I, so I need to be more involved with that, because it's, it's like.
I don't agree with that at all.
No.
Not for one business, absolutely not.
Not for a moment. On that, things are going good and.
So Public Lands Committee, we won't start meeting until January, but I have a lot of ideas around the Public Lands Committee this year for the state. I'm in charge of that one this year. Anything that comes up on public lands, let me know, and I'll put that on an agenda. And then, I think that's the only ones. Uh, Strategic Planning Committee in-house, I'm chairing that one, and Gabby Knapp has agreed to, um, take that over since Pat left. So we're continuing to work on our strategic planning, we're going to be meeting quarterly now instead of monthly. There's still a lot of work to do, uh, we're going to continue the conversation about daycare for the county, even though we can't do it at the center, we didn't get that funding, it's still in need. So we're going to send out an employee survey and ask about that, find out how many employees actually need, have need of daycare.
Why couldn't, why can't that be used at that center?
Well, first of all, it would take a lot of money to remodel it, to be able to be daycare ready. So, um, that might be something that we do, you know, ongoing, but else, I've also been talking to a charter school or homeschool group that would be using it during the week. So we're going to, we're just going to wait and continue that conversation to see where that goes over there.
I mean, that's, I know the Forest Service has that one out behind their office, they've had there for years, behind the Crassell office there, and so it's, I know they use it.
Creative Cubs.
And I don't know how many folks we have here at the county, how many employees do we actually have?
It's on a summer, summer or winter, we have about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty in the summertime. You drop down a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty.
It might be.
Right on track, yep.
Might be a good need for the county, our employees, a good, good incentive to have that.
I think it is too. It's, are we going to run it and own it, you know, that's, we, we've got to do a survey and find out what the need is before we do anything else.
A hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-three, sorry.
Nice, I got close.
Very close.
So, yeah, that conversation's ongoing, so we're working on that, we're also working on, on the strategic planning is, uh, I talked to Mike this morning, you know, about, uh, prior incarcerated. There's certainly a place for individuals that messed up and want to come back out and get a job, and it's really difficult to do. So we're going to be working on that, our road department, nothing wrong with, you know, previous incarceration there. So it's, that's a conversation, and then also people that want to retire, but maybe still need insurance, or maybe just want to work part-time, we're going to look and see if there's a way to insure them, or what the cost would be for the county to do that.
They don't need people in the weeds department.
Yes, yeah, it might be exactly, you know, somebody willing to go do that and get paid a, a, you know, a good salary and, and get insurance out of the whole thing, so.
Mike uses, uh, gentlemen to help him spraying, uh, in the summer, that's all he wants. He just wants to work the summer.
And we just had a C I P committee meeting this last month to update all of our C I P requirements and find out where everybody was and who was, who was, um, going to complete projects, and when Johanna needed to, uh, be able to save, make sure that she had funding available for all of them, so. That's kind of what I've been doing this last month.
That's what happens when you retire, you have all this time on your hands.
Yeah, we won't know for a while, probably. All right, that's our update on board words on what we've been doing the last month, so we've got about another five minutes before we start a public hearing.
You're back on.
Okay, our next action, or our next, uh, item on the agenda is a public hearing with some action items on a vacation of utility and drainage easements, vacation twenty-three dash O two and V three twenty-three. Cinda?
Expertise contact or conflict of interest.
Thank you, I better get my, I don't even know if I have a sheet on how to do it, so, do we, do you have any expertise or any kind of?
I do not.
And I do not either, so.
Okay, so the staff report for vacation twenty-three O two, vacation of the utility and drainage easement, and V dash three dash twenty-three Peterson setback variance, the applicants Kevin Peterson, property owners are Kevin and Darla Peterson. The property is addressed at forty-three Kayla Way in Whispering Pine subdivision, lot forty-five. The property is four point six four acres. Kevin and Peter, Kevin Peterson is requesting a vacation of a twenty-foot wide utility and drainage easement on the interior side of Kayla Way, a private road. He states that there are no utilities within the easement. In addition, he is requesting a variance, relax the setback from twenty feet to fourteen feet at the property line along Kayla Way. Mr. Peterson would like to add in addition to the existing shop, that would be fourteen feet from the property line instead of the required twenty feet. The variance is requested due to topography. The four point six acre lot is addressed at forty-three Kayla Way. Whispering Pine subdivision was recorded on August twenty-third, two thousand and five. Per the plat, there's a twenty-foot utility and drainage easement on all lot lines adjoining roads. This lot is split by Kayla Way. And a properly noted public hearing on September fourteenth, Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended denial of both the proposed vacation and the variance. Legal notice for this public hearing was posted in this Star News on October nineteenth and October twenty-sixth. Potentially affected agencies were notified on October eleventh, property owners within three hundred feet of the property line were notified by fax sheets sent by certified mail on October eleventh. The site was posted October twelfth, and it was posted on the Valley County website on October eleventh. Agency comments received, Mike Reno, Central District Health has no objections. Laura Lacy, Idaho Power Associate Real Estate Specialist stated Idaho Power does not have facilities located within the requested area. Idaho Power agrees to partially relinquish their interest in a portion of the utility easement, as was shown on exhibit A. Public comments received, the Whispering Pines H O A board stated the H O A board approved the structure without. without the knowledge that the structure was intended to be built on the public utility easement. Bryce and Stacy Chandler, ninety-six Arlington Heights Drive are opposed. They have concerns based on the recent work on the property line that resulted in an unnecessary fire and enforcement of the, the CCNRs. Sam Alessi, property owner in Whispering Pine subdivision, is opposed putting the shop building closer to the road. Twenty feet is not too much to respect and to maintain somewhat of a pleasing view along the roads. Property values would be reduced. Uh, listed the different portions of the Valley County Code as they pertain to vacations and variances for your review. Um, staff questions and comments, the lots are within the Cascade Fire District. They're not within a sewer district, irrigation district, or a herd district. Planning and zoning commission recommended denial of both the vacation and the variance. Um, they concluded that the proposed use is not in harmony with the general purpose of the Valley County ordinances and policies. The commission is tasked to consider the interests of adjacent property owners of utilities and of various public agencies for all of the vacation requests. The easement is designated on the plat as both utility and drainage easement. Even if unused for utilities, the easement may be needed for drainage due to the topography of the site. A variance may be granted only upon showing of an undue hardship as a result of characteristics of the site. The lot is four point five acres with room to build, and the applicant was aware there were restrictions on the lot when purchased, including easements, setbacks, and the difficulty of grading for building pads. The board needs to determine if the future development of the neighborhood would be inhibited by the vacation. If approved, the board of county commissioners would sign a resolution for declaration of vacation. And if approved, a copy of the resolution would, uh, be sent to Idaho Power per their request. Um, I put two motions here, 'cause I don't know what you're going to do. One is to approve, and one is to deny. If you decide that you're going to approve this, I'll have to have time to prepare the declaration of vacation, which is a resolution.
So, question real quick for you, Cinda, is is the vacation and the variance two separate items, or is this all in one motion?
They're two separate items. One is to vacate the easement.
Right.
And drainage, the utility easement and the drainage easement.
Okay.
The other one is a variance so that they can build the structure within fourteen feet of the property line and over where the existing utility easement exists.
Okay.
So you have to have the vacation, or you won't be able to do the variance.
Exactly. All right.
Um, and you see the pictures of the site.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the posts that you see on the left-hand side in your picture are, you know, where the structure would be expanded to. And you had copies of all the pictures. Their property is split by Kayla Way.
Split by what?
Kayla Way. They have four point some acres, four point six four acres. And the road right of way goes through the center of it. And so they have property on both sides of Kayla Way.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that ends my staff report.
Yep, thank you. Any more questions for Cinda?
No, I'm good.
And, assuming you're the applicant?
Pardon me?
Yes, okay. Assuming you're the Petersons?
Yes.
Okay, who will be speaking on your behalf? Hey, you wanna go ahead and give us your information?
Well, there are a couple of things that I would like to make.
Sir, I apologize, can you just identify yourself for the record?
I'm Kevin Peterson.
Thank you.
Property owner of lot forty-five, forty-three Kayla Way. So there are just a couple of comments that I'd like to make to clarify some of the remarks on the staff report. Um, I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but from what I understand, the comments are to come from adjoining lot owners and lot owners that are within three hundred feet of the sight line that is in question. Both of the negative comments that were received back are from folks that are not adjoining the property, and they're not within three hundred feet. So that tells me that we're taking comments from the property owners of the subdivision.
Well, they're notified within three hundred feet, we get comments from people that live in totally different cities.
Exactly. And so, just, they made two negative comments. Comments about not following the CCRs. And not continuing in a manner that is in line with the intentions of the subdivision and the CCRs essentially. Well, what I would say is because these two are the only negative comments, there are a hundred different property owners in that subdivision, so I think it's safe to say that the rest of them, ninety-eight, didn't have an opposition to it or enough to respond back to it, they weren't concerned. The other comment that I would make in regards to the CCRs that aren't being followed, I don't really know what that comment even refers to. Because everything that we've done has been submitted to the homeowners association and has been approved. So I don't even know what they're talking about, except for one thing, and that is, we have a trailer home left on the property that is not enclosed, but that was what the intention of this extension was for, is to so, extend the side of the building so we could get the camper underneath the roof. Um, in regards to the documents that are included in the staff report, the first thing that I would like to say is the plat drawing that they're using is not up to date. There are notes on it that even say that it does not include all of the finished installation of the utilities. The utilities were not completed at the time that plat was made. So it doesn't show the current utility easements necessarily, that I know of. One of the reasons I know that is because on our lot, there is a utility easement along the north side of the lot that isn't shown. And I had no knowledge of it when we bought the lot. Okay? So that's just going towards the fact that I do not have four point six four nine acres to work with. That road divides it in two. The property that is left on the side that we're trying to develop because of the topography of the lot is only one point six two, I think. So it's considerably smaller. So not knowing that that easement was along that north line, I did not know at the time that I bought it that there were no utilities along this easement. But I got to looking at the plat, and I understand why there isn't. Idaho Power is not going to go down a line that is gonna increase their costs. Kayla Way is a much longer route than the route that they chose along the north end of my property. So why would they ever put any utilities down there? They didn't, in fact. The other reason they didn't is because the slopes along that road are too steep. And if they would've gone down that Kayla Way route, they would've wiped out all the trees that are remaining between my building and the roadway. They would've had no choice but to go through those. And so that would've even made the situation worse as far as trees that screen the building, you know, those kinda things. By not going down that utility easement that was designated on the plat, they were able to leave all of those trees along that side of my property, instead of tearing them out. So, that is why they didn't do it, and that is why they will never put any utilities down that way. I'd also like to make some comments about the CCNRs. When we purchased the property, and even to this day, if you look up the CCRs on the internet, it tells you that there is only a requirement for a ten-foot setback along the property lines. Now, I don't know even to this day what overrides what, the CCRs or the county re- code requirements. I would imagine it's the county. But I can tell you that reading those CCRs and following them is partially what got me in trouble. Because it states, the only requirement is ten feet back from the property line. Now, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on who I am. I just recently retired from a job that I held for, how many years was it? I have a total of forty-three years of professional work in relevant project management. I was an engineer doing project work for Conagra Foods in Twin Falls for seventeen years. I'm an engineer, or was an engineer for J R Simplot for eleven years. And this is exactly what I did. I designed and implemented projects based on the best use of the land, the best control of the resources, the best control of the cost for the customer, as well as providing the aesthetics that we all want as we develop our property. And I can tell you that those are the same experiences that we used when we placed the shop initially. Initially, we didn't plan to build this addition. Now, why do we wanna build it? Well, believe it or not, it's because of COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen has cost us all kinds of money, it's cost us all kinds of delays. And because of the way things went over the last three years, we ended up selling our property in Meridian, and we had to have a place to store all of our household goods. And they're sitting in that shop waiting for us to get the house built. Well, guess what? That's where the camper was supposed to go. And I can't put it in there now. So that's why we wanted to extend the, the building. But we also had plans to extend it on the other side as well, because we wanted a larger shop. Now, I knew that. And guess what? With that sixteen-foot expansion and the requirement to have a reserve or a secondary drain field for the sanitation system, the septic system, that's where the shop ended up being. So that is why I'm requesting the variance. Now, I don't want to vacate the easement. I don't need to vacate it, I don't know why your rules say that I have to vacate in order to get a variance. But I don't need to vacate it. There's only two sections of the easement that need to be changed by six feet. That still leaves fourteen feet. And all of the drainage remains the same regardless of whether we change that or not, or of, regardless of whether I build the building or not. And as a matter of fact, if you go out there and you look at that land and the slope of the land, and even the drawings, the pictures that are on there, you can actually see that it would benefit the drainage if I do build that extension, because it's gonna move the water that comes off of the roof closer to the slope and keep it spread out along the length of the building. Right now, the way it is, it comes off of the building and it all drains to the north and goes off the bank in one consolidated flow. By extending the building, it'll come off of the building, and it'll be spread out over that forty feet, and it'll never consolidate, and it'll go down and it'll water the grass and the trees all the way along there. So the drainage issue is a non-issue. The utilities issue is really a non-issue. The other fact is, is my lot is different from any of the other lots in that subdivision in the fact that, other than the two to the south of me, it is divided in two by Kayla Way. And if you look at the plat, you can see that it's narrow and long. Now, why did we choose to build on that side of the road? Why didn't I utilize all the acreage on the other side? Because the other side is all drainage. It's in a hole. And that's where all the trees are. The other side is a ridge line that had an old logging road on it. And so we are building the house on the ridge, utilizing the space that was already logged out, and there are no trees on it. So we have very few additional trees that we will have to take out when we build the house. And there were very few trees that we had to take out when we built the shop where we did. But if we would've moved it to the west, we would've had to have taken out a whole bunch more trees and would've exposed the whole side of the shop to the Arlington Heights roadway.
So where are you building your home, and what is your timeframe for construction?
We are trying to get the building permit, well, the funding for it right now, and would be applying for the building pit permit this winter, and hopefully start in the spring. And it would be up on the high point of the land, which is straight north of where the existing shop is, by about a hundred and fifty feet.
Oh, in the same area?
It's on the same side of Kayla Way, because that is the high point of the property. The shop is located on the mixed-high plateau, I guess I would say, along the ridge line. And as far as being a problem for anyone else, we own the lot on the other side of the road, so nobody's affected on the other side of Kayla Way. Nobody's affected in Arlington Heights. And if you look at the two lots on either side of us, they're not close to where this actually is. This area that we're going to be developing and building the link to are inbound from the, the boundary lines of the lot. And the easement would actually be, if we abandoned it, all the way along Kayla Way would actually be a benefit to our neighbors to the south. Because they're gonna have partially the same problem. Because when they put Kayla Way in, they made it too narrow. They should've gone down the hillside a little bit further. And then there would've been usable property on both sides of the Kayla Way. One of the reasons we're developing this is because the health, the central health district put the test for the septic system on this site. So we tried to put the drain field close to where that test hole was. And then the alternate drain field location is directly west of where the shop is.
All on the same side of Kayla Way?
Yes, all along Arlington Heights. So, because of the number of drops, hookups that we wanted with a bathroom in the shop, the bathroom in the house, a bathroom in an RV, uh, location, actually, there's one on both sides of Kayla Way, and a bathroom, uh, or a septic dump for trailers, they required that I put in a twelve-hundred gallon septic tank and two hundred and twenty-five feet of drain field. The maximum length of each leg of the drain field is a hundred feet, so I have to have three drain field legs, which widened it out that much more. So if you come up off of Arlington Heights roadway and give them the utility drainage easement on the west side of twenty feet, you're just about up to my shop or where I want the new addition on the, the west side of the shop. So that's why it's positioned where it is.
Thank you.
So the west side is Kayla Way, is that correct?
The east side is Kayla Way of where the shop is. Kayla Way goes through the middle of the property, north and south. We have a strip of property that's quite narrow and long on the west side of Kala Way. And then there's a more square, square piece that's down in the trees and the drainage ditch on the east side of Kala Way.
Before the, I'm just looking at your picture. Where your shop's sitting there. Here's Arlington, here's Kala Way, here's your shop. Towards Kala Way from the shop is where your drain field is?
No, it's on the side of the shop towards Arlington Heights.
It's on the Arlington Heights side. Okay, I'm following you. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Peterson?
Well...
I'm just asking if your wife wants to add.
I do want to add something, but I don't want to offend anybody. But I'm going to do it anyway. When I first started doing this, despite my years of experience in project management, I mean, I've built processing plants of 3/4 of a billion dollars in six different countries. And here we come up against a rule that, to me, is important. And I certainly understand it, but I think it's also important that people are able to do the development that is best for the property and therefore the subdivision. And that's what we're trying to do. The other thing that I would like to say is I knew nothing about this process of abandoning or vacating and modifying the easement. So I went on the internet and I did a little bit of research. And the first example that comes up as a reason that a county or planning and zoning board would approve a vacation or an easement, I read that example and I'll be damned if it isn't word for word what just happened on Lot 10 in Whispering Pine subdivision. And I'm like, how in the hell did they get it so perfect? And I can tell you how. They had an experienced contractor that knew what he was doing. And he knew exactly how he had to write that up to get the vacation approved. But I can tell you with my 43 years of work with contractors, I would have taken the guy to court. He knew damn good and well what he did. He put a wood pin out in the side of the road that is so damn close to the road that you know it isn't accurate.
I don't really know what you're talking about. We only have five minutes. So I guess let's keep it prevalent to what we're talking about today.
Well, I think it is relevant.
I don't have any idea what you're talking about.
Because it tells you what's on the internet. So the other thing that I found on the internet is exactly what we're talking about now. A lot that was designed and it's unique to all the other lots out there because of Kala Way and how it divided that up into two portions and the one portion is just too narrow.
Thank you for your input. Any questions for the Petersons?
No, I'm good.
Any questions?
I know this.
So do we have anyone? Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm trying to formulate my mind.
Do we have any proponents in the audience? Seeing none, if you'll state, there were none. Are there any opponents in the audience? Seeing none? So I will close the public hearing at this time. I don't really have any questions. I mean, you got a, everyone denied it on planning and zoning?
Yes.
Because it, the variance doesn't speak to the fact that our ordinance says it has to be I can't remember exactly the wording. I'm trying to find it.
The vacation is future development within the subdivision. In Idaho, power isn't the only utility. Broadband, there might be something in the future. We don't know. That is a note on the face of.
Okay, the public hearing's closed, so you can't, you can't speak anymore.
And then the HOA letter at this time, I believe what they're saying is they weren't aware that the structure that they had, that they gave approval for was going to be into that utility easement.
Right. So he was talking about the fact that there is a utility easement on the north side?
I don't know about that.
Okay.
At the time of the plat, that utility easement wasn't there.
Okay.
But if they went out later and put utilities in.
They would have to have done it within a recorded right of way, though.
They would have done that or it would have been given permission by the owner to cross that portion of the lot. And then it would have been recorded after the plats and identified the subdivision down in the assessor's office.
Okay.
So Cindy, your, the 20-foot setback, that's just from the property line back, is that correct?
That's county code.
That's county code. County code, that's, it's like I did on my buildings.
Right.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the vacation. But the variance, to me, it just creates a precedent. I don't, never liked doing those because that's, I don't think it's the right thing to do.
And I would agree with that. I think we uphold what planning and zoning. Put that in form of a motion.
Yeah, she had it in here.
I think anytime we create a variance, it does set precedents. And, you know, our planning and zoning looked at it. All of them agreed with that decision. And I, I would have to concur with them in this situation. When you're talking about experts, I agree. I've been in the home building industry for 40 years. And you do have to make sure that you know what setbacks are before you place your building and expand it.
Hey?
Neither one of these motions will work. If you're going to approve the vacation.
No, we're not going to approve the vacation.
Are you, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, I motioned to deny, take a motion to deny vacation application 2302 Vacation of Utility and Drainage Easements and V323 Peterson setback variance except the Planning and Zoning Commission facts and conclusions as our own.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry. But in this case, we did uphold what planning and zoning had also made a decision on, so.
So I do have some additional questions. I don't know because I asked those now.
You can probably meet with our planning and zoning administration after unless it's pertinent to the conversation with us. We'll be back over there in an hour. Are you called?
Oh, I can come in at another time then.
All right, thank you. All right, the next action item is Django Acres final plat.
That my microphone is showing red.
You want to try the other one, Cindy, and see if it's working? Batteries go out. I think we just don't get them turned off.
Yeah, I think there's disabled ones we have at our church. They get left on. Let's go dead.
Did you call this one already, Django Acres?
Yes.
Now, this is the final plat for Django Acres. You received the packet. And so this is, I had prepared a motion for you. And they have met all the requirements of the conditions?
Yes. They have their buildings constructed, they've got their road done, they put their landscaping in a little over a week ago and have agreed that if that doesn't take, you know, if it doesn't look pleasing or they need more, that they'll put some more in next spring. They will have additional structures. But they've complied with everything required for the final plat.
Is there employee housing that they talked about doing when they originally got their plat? Or is this, they've just broke off of a section of the ground?
The three lots in the back, those can be sold separately. And they have provided access to the west and to the south. They had something a little different planned initially and didn't go with another private road taking off to the north. And we're going to do some multiple family stuff back there. They chose not to do that.
All right, you got the motion?
Yeah, let me go back up.
Go ahead and get it.
Back up to where I was at, unless you're ready.
Yep, I got it. I move to approve the final plat for Django Acres subdivision number one. Acknowledge the private road declaration. Validate Watersports Lane is a private road that will be added to the official road name list for Valley County. Acknowledge the declaration of installation of utilities. Acknowledge the CCNRs and authorize the chairman to sign the plat. This motion is made with the understanding that this subdivision runs on State Highway 55 and Valley County has no responsibility there to.
Agreed.
Been moved and seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Do you have the plat ready to sign? Next item on our agenda is motion for reconsideration ordinance related to density. So Julia, let's have a brief conversation first. So I think, not exactly certain how to move forward with this one because an ordinance is a county law. There is no reconsideration of an ordinance. So we are here to have a discussion. We will listen to the folks in the room. But truly legally, there is not a reconsideration of an ordinance. Even if it was a quasi judicial review, you're way past time to even take it to a court. So really, the only fix to this is to request that planning and zoning look at a new ordinance.
I understand that.
Okay.
And State Valley Strong had requested a motion for reconsideration. That's what it was called. And that was granted by you or by the clerk or whatever. But we understand that it's not like a land use application that you've approved. There's a motion to reconsider that.
Okay, perfect. There were some concerns. Go ahead. Let's just go ahead and open the hearing, Cindy. Or is this like a, because there really isn't a public hearing, then I think we just have a conversation because there really isn't a pathway to follow.
So on the one or two that we've had in the past, the legal counsel was able to speak for the people asking for the motion for reconsideration. They were given their, you know, 15 minutes. And then the board, you know, discussed it and took it into consideration. This was not advertised as a public hearing.
Okay. So really, it's just a conversation about the ordinance that's already been adopted and in place?
Right.
Discussion.
Okay, all right. We will proceed. Sorry. I'm outside today. I don't normally do public hearings either, so.
You know, just got wrong the same understanding of what this is. Good afternoon, commissioners. And, and thank you for rescheduling. This was supposed to be heard last month. I had a family emergency. So I appreciate the accommodation of my personal schedule there. Just to, just to be clear, just to have this on the record of what we're discussing, discussing our amendments to Title IX, Chapter IX for planning unit development, specifically the language added to Section 9-9-7. Our position is, is that the passage of the ordinance violated procedures required under Idaho Code 67-6509 and that the language is vague and ambiguous and provides no standards and criteria of how specific land use applications will be evaluated. Therefore, we do request that the commissioners look at this ordinance again and look at the procedural deficiencies and the substantive deficiencies and repeal the ordinance if that's the process that you go to. And of course, you know, would obviously be able to consider a new ordinance after that. So Idaho Code 67-6509B requires that the governing board receive a recommendation prior to adoption, amendment, or repeal of a local ordinance from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It further states that if the governing board makes a material change in the recommendation, further notice and hearing shall be provided before the governing board adopts, amends, or repeals the plan. We believe on the base, that based on the following facts that I'll go through, that a material change in that recommendation was made and adopted without further notice and hearing. So for the, we, we understand that Planning and Zoning Commission did give the board a recommendation and that was properly noticed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. They had their public hearing. They made the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. For its June 12th public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners had, like I said, had that recommended amendment, which stated dwelling units per gross acre can be increased to provide community and workforce housing at negotiated percentages that are memorialized in a development agreement with the Board of County Commissioners. We believe that the June 12th public hearing was properly noticed regarding the recommended amendment from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that hearing was conducted at which during the deliberations, the commissioners discuss this recommended amendment. And at that hearing, the commissioners also discussed proposed changes to that amendment by adding language that would potentially limit the application of that amendment to areas closer to incorporated cities or the impact area. At that hearing, no specific language was proposed at the time and it was determined that the Planning and Zoning Director work on that language and, and bring that back to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. And a new date, the hearing was tabled and a new date was set for June 26th to review the additional language. The additional language added to the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was short but very material. Specifically, it added the following. "Consideration will be based upon distance from incorporated cities, impact areas, and available infrastructure such as sewer and water." Added language does constitute a material change from P&amp;Z's recommendation. The purpose is to drive density closer to cities and it impacts landowners of property located in or around incorporated cities and impact areas, whether they are developers or adjacent landowners, and it impacts them differently from the rest of the county. Material change triggered the need for further notice and a hearing under Idaho Code 67-6509. And that's what we are arguing that was not, that's where the procedural deficiency occurred. That notice and hearing was, notice of a new hearing was not provided before the June 26th consideration of this new language. The, the strict adherence to these notice procedures in 67-6509 has been affirmed by the Supreme Court numerous times. For instance, in Jerome County versus Holloway, the court recognized the importance of following such procedures for actions of a legislative body that have possible effects upon property rights and satisfying the requirements of due process. And I quote from the court opinion, "When the statute requires notice and hearing as to the possible effect of a zoning law upon property rights..." upon property rights, the action of the legislative body becomes quasi judicial in character and the statutory notice and hearing then becomes necessary in order to satisfy the requirements of due process and may not be dispensed with." Again, in Price versus Payette County Board of Commissioners, the court stated, quote, "If the board, after a public hearing on a request to amend the comprehensive plan, makes a material change in the plan, then the board must provide notice of and conduct, and conduct a second hearing before the board adopts the amendment." So as I said, we believe that the amendment was adopted with the additional language that was a material change to what Planning and Zoning had recommended to the board. And that was done so without following the proper procedures for additional notice and an additional hearing according to 67-6509B. So that's the first basis that we recommend to appeal, that the county commissioners review that and recommend that you appeal this ordinance or amendment to the ordinance. Our second concern is that the amendment could be invalidated on constitutional grounds as being vague and ambiguous. It does not, for example, provide sufficiently clear standards and criteria for the governing board to evaluate specific land use proposals. Efficient procedures and precise criteria are required to both guide landowners and affected persons in proposing projects or understanding how their land might be impacted from future projects. Efficient criteria guard against the exercise of uncontrolled discretion by this and future governing boards. And land use ordinances are there to implement the vision, the objectives, and the goals found in the comprehensive plan. And these plans were developed with extensive participation and approved by the public. It's the will of the people and ordinances are there to implement that will. Having precise criteria and ordinance that can be used to evaluate the ability of a proposed project to have increased density, particularly, is particularly necessary where you have a comprehensive plan in a county like ours that has a one district multi-use zoning scheme. And each proposal is based, each proposal is evaluated on a case-by-case basis on whether, what that zoning will be. So people don't have an idea ahead of time what density is allowed there. And so having more specific, more standard criteria in this amendment would let people evaluate how their property might be impacted in the future. The amendment basically amounts to a free check on the governing board on how to evaluate future proposals for increased density. And I don't mean that as a criticism to any board here, but we have to think about the board as a future governing board as Valley County in all eternity, basically, until someone decides to repeal this ordinance. There's no criteria, as I said, to ensure that projects are approved on the basis of this amendment to implement the comprehensive plan and that the will of the people has been followed. And given the extremely high deference that governing boards are given under judicial review, the way this amendment is written so broadly, again, does not provide the courts with standards to evaluate the governing board's decision. The basis of this amendment and the way it was adopted also doesn't support the idea that this amendment was adopted to implement the comprehensive plan. For example, when Chairman Hasbrook was asked by one of the residents of Valley County why he was adopting or approving this language, he said that it was because commissioners and Planning and Zoning Director wanted it. It's not a basis. It's not the way to adopt an ordinance. And it does not support that this ordinance is implementing the comprehensive plan. So again, on the basis that this ordinance is vague and ambiguous, we again request that the board repeal this amendment. Those are the two main reasons, again, why we are requesting that you repeal this amendment. I'd like to just talk about the consequences of having an amendment that may possibly be invalidated at some point. It's well established, as you know, under Idaho law, that an applicant's rights are determined by the ordinance in existence at the time of filing of the application for a permit. However, that's not what happens when an ordinance is invalidated. In Citizens Against Lynn Scott Interstate Asphalt Plant versus Bannor County Board of Commissioners, the Idaho Supreme Court recognized that it is well settled law that an ordinance that was adopted in violation of Idaho Code 67-6509 is void ad nisio. In other words, an ordinance in existence at the time but found invalid later cannot authorize a proposed use. An approval of a land use application on the basis of that ordinance will be invalid. So as we argued, we believe that this ordinance is invalid because it ran afoul of Idaho Code's procedural requirements and because it is vague and ambiguous. Lacks the standards and criteria on which an application of a proposed permit is to be evaluated. Therefore, we respectfully request that the commissioners consider repealing this ordinance, considering the deficiencies that we've identified. Thank you for your time and you talked. We can have that discussion now.
Thank you. And it is good to have a discussion. I mean, when there is a disagreement, we do need to get together and talk about it and figure out, you know, what's true and what's not true, what we can come to some resolution on. So on the hearing notice itself, so we were on June 12th. We had the meeting. It was tabled for more information. Posted again on June 21st first with the additional language when the hearing was noticed. And on June 26th, we had a full public hearing.
It wasn't, it wasn't noticed in the newspapers again as another hearing. My, as far as I can see, it was noticed on the agenda. As a public hearing, you're correct. But I believe that under 67-6509, you would, you should have, because there was that material change in that language from P&amp;Z's recommended amendment, that that should have been noticed as a new public hearing.
And then let's talk about the conversation about being vague. So this is only on a PUD. PUDs are vague for a reason so that there can be a negotiation. It's not standard land use. I mean, it's, the conversation I'm getting from you is that every subdivision would be looking at this. This is a PUD with a recommendation that there's a negotiation between the board and a developer. So there is nothing that's set.
Yeah, but there's not, there's not a reason that there can't be more specific criteria to evaluate what it means to, you know, how close to incorporated cities or impact areas, what other factors might be considered. If someone's outside of those areas, whatever those areas are, because it's not defined, you know, does this apply to them? And what criteria are they evaluating, their proposal is evaluated on? You know, if they're, if they feel they're not close to an incorporated city. Again, we don't know what, you know, what close is.
Well, and I think instead of proximity to a city, it's proximity to sewer and water.
I said both, right? I mean, the amendment says it'll consider infrastructure.
And that's partly, that's probably what I was looking at when we were having this discussion. It's like, Cinda always pushes us to try to custer the densities to the cities. And when we got to talking about having the discussion of raising the density per unit, we looked at just the PUD and it's like, okay, let's leave what it is in the county alone. Which I think, is it six? Is that?
It was six.
Six.
Yes.
And.
Newsbreaker.
We allow higher than said to PUD. PUD has to be next to infrastructure of some sort to be able to operate. Where you'd be building another city, basically. So that's, that was the whole purpose of what we were doing, to give us a little bit of leeway at this level to be able to work within that PUD and say, okay, we can have apartments, we can have whatever to up the densities in just that subdivision or whatever that is. But it had to be a PUD. And so that's, that's what gave us the leeway to do that. That's why we adopted the language.
And specifically stated sewer and water, so that you're not all over the county. It's not, it's going to be looked at very specifically and negotiated on. I mean, this is not a given. Somebody can't just come in and say, I have a PUD and I want density. No. Why do you want density? What are you going to include in that? I mean, there's a full negotiation on that.
I understand that. And I think part of the issue is, is that negotiation is, you know, basically the criteria for that negotiation is kind of up for grabs, especially with a potential PUD that's out in the county somewhere perhaps not very close to the city or at least not close to the city for what some people think should be closer to the city. I mean, there's, you know, there's, you know, transportation impacts and considerations. I mean, in terms of when we're thinking about pushing density closer to the cities. I mean, then that's a good thing, right? Like you said, sewer and water and other city services, you know, even EMS and fire services are a little easier to bring out to denser areas. Although I mean, result in more calls or something because you have a higher density of people and more things are going to happen. But still, I mean, all that, all that other infrastructure is also, you know, important or better served, or better serves the community when you do have that density. However, you know, I think there's, just the criteria are vague. It's like you can, it just says that you'll consider that, but there's no, there's no meaning what that means, I suppose. I mean, is, you know, is if someone decides to build their own little sewer system, does that matter? Does that take away the, you know, maybe the negative point from this being a PUD that should not be approved with a higher density because it's out there, but they're going to take care of their sewer somehow by themselves or water?
Well, we have a number of those. We have Black Hawk.
Right.
We have Dog Mountain. I mean, we have a lot of them.
Well, and those aren't very dense.
And that would be the conversation at that moment in time. I mean, if they are going to invest.
I think just from, from the public's perspective, from adjacent landowners, from perhaps developers as well. You know, it's hard to evaluate what, what is going to happen with your property or the next door property based on just this, you know, vague discussion. And I think, I think, you know, it's a function of, or it's a problem because of this multi-district, or excuse me, one district multi-use zoning that we have. It's the zoning that we have. That's in the comprehensive plan.
You and I will agree on that one. I would zone the county in a minute, but I haven't won that fight.
Well, I was going to say, you have, yeah, you have to amend the plan to do that, right? And that's not an easy thing.
So.
But, but that, that sort of, but that, that makes, that makes an ordinance that is somewhat vague on the criteria that you're assessing projects even not much more difficult. Because you don't, you know, if someone, if someone was in the county and they knew the property next to them was zone eight or whatever, you know, there might be some ordinance that allows higher density. For instance, McCall has the density bonus for workforce housing. So it might be zoned R8, but you might get an R16. If everybody deed restricts, they did deed restrict every unit and everything. But there's still a sense that there's some sort of cap or some sort of idea of how dense.
There's a guideline, but Julia, the, the planning and zoning, the commissioners in the past, the existing commissioners that are the majority here feel that each application stands on its own. The public has the opportunity to come in and voice, you know, their information. And that's the way Valley County is owned. That is the way that it is functioning currently. Everyone has a voice and, you know, to bring all the information.
And so I'll go back to the procedural process that we think was not followed is, you know, that material change with that language was something that the public in general did not have notice of, proper notice of as required under 67-6509.
My understanding is, as long as that you actually post it, we did post it to a date certain. And that as long as you allow the public, I mean, we had a full public hearing. We allowed everyone to speak.
On June 12th.
On June 26th.
And that, yeah, and I mean, this is just a disagreement of law between us. And you can, you have an attorney that you could discuss this with. But, but that's, that's our, that's our argument is that that second, it would have been okay if you had tabled the hearing and you hadn't made a change to that language that P&amp;Z recommended. And you would have, whatever, adopted, denied it, whatever. But the fact that you had that material change, I mean, that's, I think, where our issue is, is that the public didn't have further notice in a hearing, properly noticed hearing, to consider that material change in that amendment.
And I guess the question is, and you get two lawyers in a room and they're going to decide what that material change looks like or what that conversation means by material change.
Yeah, and eventually perhaps a judge.
Possibly. You and I both know, well, here and there. But what I'm saying is, is that that term material change means different things to different people. So we were talking about density. We were talking about the PUD process at the meeting on the 12th. We asked Cinda to write that. On the 26th, we posted on the 21st. We actually had a public hearing on the 26th and let everyone respond to that. So I guess, you know, we will have that further conversation, so.
And it's hard to put, you know, from reading, I'm reading all this stuff. It'd be great if you had very defined specifics of how that process will work. This piece of land, from this piece of land, how is that far from the city? You know, all those nice specifics.
Well, you don't have to just say that, considering distance.
It makes it easier if you did have that. But for us, we have to have a little leeway how to be able to function and work with each developer and in the best interest of people in this county. Because we don't want it out in space farmland either. We love our open spaces. And we're just trying to keep it clustered to where we have services. It's difficult. It's not easy to do these things.
I don't imagine it is.
Valley County is so different. I can't state that enough. We are different. We are unique. McCall doesn't run a sewer system. Somebody else does. As you will know. You don't have decisions on. It has. I'm not going to lie, you know? But we also have a sewer system that goes clear to Tamrac, who's also a PUD. And so it's not, you can't just state, we're going to put it inside of the city because services are offered elsewhere. Our fire districts are huge fire districts. Cascade's fire district goes clear to Yellow Pine. So those districts are different than a standard city fire department. There's a fire station at Tamrac, so it's not just within a specific city. Valley County is different than any other county I've worked in. And so it is unique. And that's why the PUD is so incredibly important. So that we have an opportunity to look at each piece, get input, find out why this is a good location, not a good location. We are trying to preserve farm ground. We have unique farm ground here too.
Well, and, you know, we understand. I mean, there are codes, you know, for PUDs for a reason. You know, and obviously, you know, you do need to evaluate that you need to have codes. I mean, you know, I think our disagreement isn't so much with, you know, having some way to manage or evaluate PUD proposals. They're going to happen, they're going to come in. But, you know, right now, what we're arguing is that amendment that was made with that additional language was a material change that violated the procedures prescribed by that Idaho code. And that's what we're asking you to review at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
All right. So I'm assuming you're speaking for the State Valley Strong?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I do not know if there are other people.
Mayor Doris? We've given a half an hour for this. We've already done that, so we are good.
I need, I need 30 seconds.
Perfect.
So I'm actually in favor of increased density in a PUD in the city's impact area. I mean, that's, that's fair. In a city's impact area is where higher density should be. Otherwise, we have these little hopscotches of PUDs. And we all know that. Otherwise, we have these little hopscotches of PUDs and we all know that can happen. And when the public gets like they're feeling like they're not heard in multiple public hearings, that's why this happens. But I actually am in favor of higher PUD densities in the city impact areas. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Is anyone here not associated with Valley Strong? All right, then we will just continue on. It's not really a public hearing, so I can't close a public hearing. So as far as the hearing notice, obviously, again, the conversation, when we started this conversation, it was about densities and PUDs. And I don't feel like there was a substantial material change with the way that it was written the first time versus the second time.
I think we keep going forward like we are. Guys feel it's a real issue. There's always a legal way to go. Right now, I think we'll stay with where we're at. Thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it. All right. Yeah, I don't see a reason to withhold that ordinance or take it back at this moment in time. It is an adopted ordinance. We can continue to have that conversation, you know, at the Planning and Zoning level. If there's something that P&amp;Z feels like they need to make change or, but I don't feel like we had a noticing issue and I don't think that it was, I think it was purposely vague in a PUD. We will stand for now. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next action item is an executive session for Idaho Code one seventy-four two oh-six one F. And I would make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Upson, aye.
Upson, aye. All right, Doug, we will be in at two thirty-four.